Good evening, we will call our board meeting to order. Today is Monday, February 24th, 6:00 PM. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have two students with us this evening from Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. We have Goose Root Bahadi and Madeline May. And I also believe Mr. Watson is here to join them. Alright, ladies, will you please join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in a visible and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Watson, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Could I get a picture of them really quick? Got some, this is a proud moment. Well, that's a selfie, we don't want that. Hey, thank you. Come on over here guys, real quick. You're not done yet, come on. So Goose Root Bahadi, come over here. And Madeline May, these are two outstanding leaders in our school. So these two students we selected to come and read the pledge because they were our most recent student principal of the days, and this is a really honorable position. So we're thrilled that they could come. So Goose Root's a 4th grader, and Madeline's a 5th grader. Now here's the cool thing, they have similar interests. I can brag about a lot of things. Number 1, they're both leaders. And number 2 is they both love art, from what your parents said. And number 3 is, they didn't want to brag about, they didn't want me to brag about them. So just the fact that they came and they had the honor to come here and do this, and they were a great outstanding principal of the days, so we just, I appreciate both of you and your leadership and what you do to support Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. Congratulations, appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is... Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I have certificates? Oh, Lord. They're so fancy, I didn't want to touch it.
Mr. Watson then.
Alright, so next on our agenda is roll call. I will do it. Mr. Ambrose?
Present.
Mrs. Abney Mitchell?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Mrs. Hines? Ms. May, present. Mr. Rochon?
Present.
And Mr. Cox.
Present.
Thank you. Next, we are moving to agenda item 284.25A, recognitions and presentations. This point, we will have the renaming of Wayne Memorial High School Pool. And I have a resolution that I would like to read. Resolution of appreciation and acknowledgement of the service, dedication, and work of Coach James McPartland. Whereas James McPartland has served Wayne Westland Community Schools as a physical education teacher for over 35 years. And whereas during his service, he has diligently served as the head coach of the Wayne Memorial High School Swimming Program for 18 years, receiving 15 combined league championships. And whereas Mr. McPartland was named as a member of the Wayne Memorial High School Hall of Fame in 1994. And whereas Mr. McPartland was the founder of the Wayne Dolphin Swim Team, where he served as head coach for over 25 years. Whereas Mr. McPartland was the lead official at the MHSSA Swimming State Championships, and served over 20 years officiating at the MHSSA State Swimming Finals. And whereas Mr. Partland taught lifeguarding, CPR, first aid, and aquatic skills classes, allowing students to obtain jobs as lifeguards and swim instructors at local pools. And whereas Mr. McPartland was a community member aiding the effort of the building of the Wayne Recreation Center, a member of St. Mary Parish in Wayne, and a member of MISCA, M-I-S-C-A, the Michigan Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association. Now therefore, be it resolved and known to all that the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools hereby dedicates the Wayne Memorial High School Pool, and that it be hereafter known as the James J. McPartland Natorium. I am looking for a motion.
So move.
Support.
I'm done with double duty, hold on one second, I'm so sorry. That was Mr. Cox and Dr. Weaver, correct?
Luana.
Luana, I'm so sorry. And now I will, any discussion? This point, alright, so then I... Discussion, no discussion. At this point, I will call for a vote. May, yes. Mr. Rochon?
Yes.
Miss, Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mr. Cox?
I thought his name was already on it, yes.
I would like to call Mr. McPartland down to receive his nice plaque. Where is he? Ms. McPartland, okay. Mrs. McPartland.
I would just like to take a moment, I don't know if I need this, to thank the board and for this great honor. And my husband, he was truly an amazing man. Not only was to his brothers and sisters, which there were 10 in his family, but also as a husband, a father, a teacher, and a swimming coach. He put so much energy into everything he did, and he always had us striving to be the best we can possibly be. And I have all this amazing swimming parent... Would you all please stand up? Come on, you gotta stand up. Family and friends, all family and friends. Thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
I would like to ask Mr. Mike Gruber to please go to the mic here.
Thank you so much. I just want to take a couple, just a brief moment. I want to thank Superintendent Curry for her work on getting the pool. Helped me dedicate and rename the pool. I want to thank Mrs. Markey for her hard work. I want to thank the board for taking this on and resolving it. It's lo- long overdue, like Mr. Cox said. I have had the pleasure of knowing Jim McPartland for 50 years. He was my coach, he was my mentor, he was my colleague, and most of all, he was my friend. And we miss him every day. And what you see here is the love and legacy that a good man lived a good life. And you see the love and support that you see in this room for himself, for his wife, his son Jimmy, and his daughters Jill and Jamie. We really appreciate that. Now, I've already talked to Digital One Source, who does all of our signage for the district. We are, as an alumni swimming group, are privately funding some signage that's going to go inside the pool and outside the pool as well. We're going to get that ordered here in the next week or so. And I've got some things I want to do in the pool first, and then we're going to have a big dedication ceremony as soon as that's done, which obviously all the board will be welcome to attend. You will be invited to that ceremony whenever that is, hopefully sooner rather than later. Because one of the things that, as we looked forward to, I never thought I would have to do this pool naming posthumously, but we lost him so quickly. And when he was alive, I mentioned that we were going to do this, and he was adamant about not having his name on that pool. But I knew what it would mean to his family, and to all of us who had the privilege and honor of knowing him. And I've had the privilege of being the boys and girls swim coach at Wayne since 1991. And I also took over for him. Thank you. When he decided to step down with the Wayne Dolphin Swim Club, I've also been the coach of that almost 20 years now. So for him to leave that in my hands, I really appreciated the testament that he had in me and the support that he has always given me and my family as well. So we love him, and we thank you again for all your hard work and your resolution to put his name on that pool. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those kind words. Next on our agenda is the building update from Mr. Mark Watson for Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. And as Mr. Watson is making his way to the podium, if you all would like to exit, you may at this time. Or you're welcome to stay. Thank you so much for coming out.
She didn't say when.
We made it work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What an honor to follow such an amazing event. I didn't know that was going to happen. I was making connections as we left. We, one of the great things about Roosevelt McGrath is we do have a pool. And it's part of our Adaptive PE program. And I just met some amazing people who have a traditional background that use that pool. So I, my heart's just open and smiling, I love it. So that was great. So I'm Mark Watson, a proud principal of Roosevelt McGrath Elementary School. And they asked me if I had a chance to come and brag about my school. I said, yes, yes I would. So this is an amazing update for an amazing school full of amazing students and staff. So Roosevelt McGrath, our school mascot is the Road Runner. Our school color is red, and our students live into each and every day our positive behavior expectations, which is be safe, be responsible, and be respectful. And you'll hear more about that as we move along in the presentation. Our school is made up of 452 amazing students. We have 16 general ed classrooms and 7 self-contained classrooms, which consist of 2 kindergarten, 3 first grade, 3 second grade, 3 third grade, 2 4th grade, 3 5th grade, 2 SXI classrooms, 1 SCI classroom, 3 ASD, and 1 Pohai classroom. Out of our 450 students, 130 students are receiving special education services. We have 10 multilingual students. And our ethnicity, race, and special populations consist of 38.9% African-American, 0.9% Asian, 45.6% Caucasian, 6.2% Hispanic, 0.7% Middle Eastern, 6.6% multi-ethnic, and 1.1% Native American. That's the picture and snapshot of our amazing school. Wouldn't be that amazing if we didn't have an awesome staff. And our staff is just an outstanding piece. In the picture you see too, we were still holding on to the hopes for our Lions. So that was that picture, it's still, it's in our heart. A proud thing is 50% of our staff have been at Roosevelt McGrath for 5 years. That's a great connection and a great tribute to the past of what we do at Roosevelt McGrath and the new and innovative process that we use now. Two really outstanding staff that we have amongst all them is Amy Kay, because we can never pronounce her name. So it's Amy Kay. She was our Food Services Employee of the Year for '24-'25, and Care of Usage was the Elementary Wayne Westland Teacher of the Year '23-'24. So that's, those are proud moments and proud staff. Some unique staff that associated with Roosevelt McGrath. We have a behavior coordinator, a parent coordinator, and 2 Adaptive PE teachers, which I mentioned, we do have a pool. And one of our Adaptive PE teachers does work in the pool and swim with the kids. So attendance is huge. We need our kiddos to come, and we love the fact that we celebrate attendance each day. And we're proud of our attendance rate. Our average daily attendance rate as of today is 90%. We celebrate attendance throughout the year. Students earn Road Runner Buck attendance certificates. We'll talk more about Road Runner Bucks as we move along. Students can redeem awesome prizes from our PBIS Road Runner Store with their Road Runner Buck certificates. Our average daily attendance rate increased from 85% in December '24 to 90% in February '25. And we did a lot of celebrating attendance throughout those months. So we're really happy to see that. Specifically through the sicknesses and kids getting the, you know, the winter blues. It was really nice to see that increase. So the next slide shows 4 amazing students who have, as of 100 days of school, they have perfect attendance. So we celebrated them with certificates, and they got some whoppers of some Road Runner Bucks that they can spend at the Road Runner Store. Some other random attendance celebrations we do throughout the year. We like to celebrate all aspects of attendance. Is we celebrate, like if a student was there 100% all week, we'll pick random weeks and we'll celebrate those students who were there the entire week. And we pick random weeks to do that. We also have, for example, if a class was there, the entire class, we celebrate the entire class for a celebration of attendance as well. And those kiddos who get there on time, we like to celebrate those too. That's an important thing. So when the kids are on time, we pick random days and they get certificates for that. So with those Road Runner certificates for attendance, we also get Road Runner Bucks at Roosevelt McGrath for being respectful, responsible, and safe. And what they do with those certificates and Road Runner Bucks is they get to go to the Road Runner Store and they get to buy just an assortment of awesome prizes that are funded through our PTO and our PBIS support. And then a lot of it's Amazon support from parent volunteers who support and supply that. So it's awesome. There was a gigantic, I know the picture of it, this gigantic teddy bear, and everyone wanted it, and it's gone. They got it. So someone earned that, it was awesome. Relationships and student wellbeing is an important part of any school, but we really make that a tribute to what we do and a focus of what we do at Roosevelt McGrath. Building and maintaining, that's a key piece, is maintaining strong positive relationships with students is a key to our success at Roosevelt McGrath. All staff greet students each morning. A lot of smiles and high fives are occurring. We focus on community building the first 2 weeks of school. We have student-led morning announcements every day. We use restorative practices to solve student challenges. We have student emotional support groups, proactive social skill lessons, regulation strategies, de-escalation and conflict resolution strategies, calm-down areas in classrooms, check-in, check-outs, and breaks. We just want to make sure we have an opportunity that everyone feels comfortable and heard and listened as students, and their voices there, everyone. And we have opportunities for that to occur. In addition to all the relationships we build, we offer just an more amazing assortment of experiences for our students. Our 5th grade camp, our students go to camp for free. Our Philharmonic Orchestra visits, or the Philharmonic Orchestra visits our 3rd grade. There's plenty of zoo trips, apple orchard trips, Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum. Our kids all throughout Roosevelt McGrath loves our unified gym experience. We have a talent show, Fun Run, trunk or treat, holidays. We had Grinch Santa, the Wayne Police Department, and our Road Runner come to visit for the holidays. We visit the STEM Center at John Glenn High School. And we offer basketball, flag football, cheerleading, and piloting soccer soon to come for 3rd grade and 2nd grade. One of the amazing things that we do each and every day amongst all the support of kiddos is making sure we're focused on achievement each and every day. Making sure that goal setting is occurring, making sure that our students know what their target is, and making sure that that's a focus. So we made sure that they're here. Attendance is important, we make sure our relationships are strong. And then we continuously look at our data. Here's a snapshot really of where we're at with our NWA. The kids take NWA testing in the fall, in the winter, and at the end of the year in May. And we're proud to say and happy to say that in reading, they're 34% for reading across the board, and at math, at 41%. So what that tells us is that we're on track. That we tells us that, NWA tells us that 50% of kids should be meeting their RIT scores by the end of the year. And we're on track to meeting that, if not exceeding that. So we're very happy about that. Some points of pride about Roosevelt McGrath, our student leadership team is vast. We have safeties, service squad, a newspaper, announcements, and our classroom leadership positions, and like you met, our principal of the days. Our community involvement and partnerships are amazing and support all of our community members. We have a homeowners association that adopts families for the holidays. First Congressional Church of Wayne supports food for holidays. And the First Congressional Church also provides coats for kids. Really, in the beginning of the fall, they start to support us with getting coats in the hands of kids. We have a great relationship with our Wayne Fire Department and Police Department. And this was new this year, our vision van, which was amazing. They screened 127 students, and 63%... 63 students received new, brand-new glasses free. And it was, it was awesome. And they were showing those glasses off. It forced me, I had to go get a new pair because I was like, man, you guys have great glasses. So it was awesome. And we wouldn't be who we are if it wasn't for our McGrath, our Roosevelt McGrath PTO. They provide such functions as our fun fair, our book fairs, someone's special dance, trunk or treat, popcorn Fridays, a Fun Run, Penny War, spring flower sale, and so, so much more. Our student leadership selects Student Council Spirit Days, and this is just a snapshot of what a spirit week and day could look like at Roosevelt McGrath. You know there had to be Lions in there, we had to get them in there. So a really important position that kids earn is that when students spend their Road Runner Bucks at the Road Runner Store, all the Road Runner Bucks go into a big barrel. And then a couple times throughout, about 3 or 4 times a year, we'll select, randomly select a Road Runner Buck to be the principal of the day. And it's an exciting time. We really make it a big deal, we amp it up. The kids are reminding me all the time, when's the principal day coming? And it really builds up the enthusiasm for the hard work they are for being respectful, responsible, and safe. It is not easy to do, it's an important piece, so we take great pride in it. So you met the 2 former principal of the days, so each year we have 3 to 4 principals of the year. So what do they do for a principal day? Well, they meet, they have a heavy agenda. We build a great agenda for them. They usually have a meeting with the superintendent or someone from central office. They meet with the fire department and the Wayne Police Department to talk about safety things and things that support the community. They read the classrooms. They support each other with the lunchroom, making sure that choices are being made in Road Runner Bucks. Oh, and by the way, they also get a McDonald's lunch, which is a big thing, and they get to bring a friend for that. So it's a great day. They're already, our kids are already asking me when the next one is. So the exclamation mark of Roosevelt McGrath is our Road Runner Red Fridays. This all comes back down to relationships, relationships, relationships. And we're very proud Road Runners. As we said, our colors are red and we are the Road Runners. So every Friday, we have a little competition, and it builds a lot of spirit and support and connections to our school. So between our K3, or excuse me, our K2, our 3-5 and our McGrath classes, the students or class that has the most red or Road Runner gear wins that week, and they have a huge flag that hangs outside their classroom. And they just go at it. They, the competition is awesome. And I love it, I love it, I love it. So when I get up there on Friday mornings, I'll come in, I do my walk-through every morning, and I'll see a class, and a teacher will look at me and say, yep, so-and-so, they didn't wear red today. I'm like, we got red for you, we'll get, we'll get it red. And they love it. So it's a really great, it's a great attribute to making sure that we support each other and that we are very proud to be at that school. Roosevelt Road Runners are very proud, and each and every day, they're happy to be there. And Fridays, we really just laid on thick, so. Well, thanks for allowing me to present about Roosevelt McGrath. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I have a few questions.
Mrs. Abney Mitchell?
I gotta find them. So your pool, is that a classroom swimming?
It is a classroom, yep. It's Adaptive PE for our students in Roosevelt, in the McGrath wing of our school, in our self-contained classrooms. So it is absolutely a classroom. The teacher and 2 of the paras are trained to be in the pool. And then there's 2 paras that are outside the pool on the deck, and they do all their physical education in the pool. It's an amazing experience. If you'll come by sometime, it's awesome.
Thank you for the invite, I sure will.
Yeah.
And also, your parent coordinator, what is that?
Our parent coordinator is like the pulse of our heart in our office. So what the parent coordinator does is help bridge the liaison to new families coming. They, we get a lot of calls, a lot of questions about coming from different areas. She helps bridge that gap. And she talks about the great things that we have at Roosevelt McGrath. She's our liaison. And then when we have kids and families in need, if parents have some questions about how to reach something, it's confidential, if they need some support with food or clothes, they reach out, and our parent coordinator is that liaison. That piece is so valuable to us. It's paid through our title funds. Our leadership team elected to have that position, and it's so vital to our school. Thanks for asking that, that was a great question too.
So is like, is that like the only parent group you have? Or do you have another parent group?
So the parent coordinator is a specific position that's in our school, but we have a PTO that is our parent group.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
I think those are the only ones that I marked. Thank you so much for presenting.
Thank you, thanks for the questions.
Go red, run for it.
Yes. Come by on a Friday.
I didn't forget your money, I was just going to... But go ahead. Yes, so, just a quick question. So I am concerned about what's going on, you know, in the nation with the Department of Education. Would that have like any impact on your program at McGrath?
No.
Okay, thank you, I was worried about that.
And if it starts to seem like it, we will have a good conversation. So it's something that's, I'm glad you brought that up. It's really at all of our hearts, it's tugging at us. So we are continuously reviewing any new updates, but we are continuously moving forward with all of our initiatives, following each and every step of the law.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, great question, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Rochon?
I just want to say thank you for the work that you guys are doing. I look forward to coming over there.
I appreciate that.
To be a part of the Red Friday.
Yeah, Road Runner Fridays.
Where am I red?
Our next principal of the day, I'll send you guys an invite if you want to come meet him. I should have done that sooner.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you for the question.
Quick question, as far as student achievement. The NWEA, how often do they test? I see it's for the winter.
Yeah, they test in the fall, the winter, and the spring.
Spring, okay.
It's a nationally normed test. Thousands of students across the nation take that test. So that's why it's one of the most valid tests that we use, that we like to use as data, to see where we rank amongst our peers across the United States.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that, with the results of that test, I'm wondering, what are the trends from this year's, from last year? Are we progressing, where are we?
So our trends right now are kind of very paralegal. So our trends right now are kind of very parallel to where we were last year.
Okay.
We do a lot of goal setting, so what it would look like is in, in the winter, after we take the test, we would look at our leadership team and our classrooms would look at where we are in our data and what it looks like, for, for example, two years ago, we did a huge celebration of doing data goal setting and we were at around the same spot with thirty percent, thirty-four percent and fifty percent or forty-one percent math. And the goal is to get everyone, we want to get to fifty, fifty-five percent of having all those students meet their RIT. And what we did was we goal set, just like we're doing today. And we saw a great movement from December, January, when they're taking the test, to May because they're now goal setting, they know where they're at, the students will know. We have classrooms that will create charts for their own classrooms, like a scoreboard, a very, a very supportive scoreboard that will show, hey, this is where we're at, this is where we need to be. So this is the benchmark in the winter that helps push us to get to the spring. So what I love about your question is it does let us reflect on where we were in the past and we know we're kind of on track where I confidently said, hey, we should be right where we need to be. And if we can get, and when we say fifty percent of kids meeting their RIT, that doesn't mean the kids who didn't meet their RIT are failing. That means they're getting there and they're close. And the great thing about NWA is it meets them at where they're at. So for example, I could have, I'll have thirty students in a classroom, but those three students are going to be at different levels. NWA tests and sets them at every different level where they're at. So if a student tests one day, their score is ranked against where they were against kids at their level across the nation. So they're not really against or rated against someone in their classroom. The norms show us where they are across the nation. And that to me is an important snapshot of where we're at. So, thanks for the question, I appreciate that.
One last question. With the data that you guys get, how do you guys communicate that with the parents so the parents can kind of get involved with?
So, could we do a better job at getting that out daily via the school? Yeah, I think, but the classrooms with the parent conferences help support that. When they come in, they'll go through NWA data, they'll go through report card data, they'll go through objectives of what they were going to meet. We also have PTO meetings that will talk about where they are and where we're at as far as testing. Specific data results though, yeah, you hit it, we probably need to get a, do a better job at sharing that. But we've had, in the past, we've had data nights where parents would come in and learn about NWA. Jen and I presented NWA years ago, one of my favorite assessment pieces, so that's a great reminder to get more information out to parents and get the conversation going about that. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you so much, Mr. O'Shaughnessy, for your presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the opportunity, thanks.
Next on our agenda, we are looking to move into closed session. I am looking for a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver, support.
Support.
Thank you, Mrs. Abney Mitchell. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are going into closed session at six thirty-three. Entertain a motion to move into an open meeting.
So move.
Thank you, Mr. Pax.
Support.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are now at agenda item two eight four point two five, recognitions and presentations. Our first presentation is from Mr. Toko around elementary athletics.
Thank you. I'm going to have Jenny Johnson and Maria Mitter are going to be doing a presentation on our elementary athletic programs. I'm going to just kind of tease it a little bit with, five years ago, approximately five years ago, we started the elementary programs at the elementary with flag football and then went from flag football to girls' basketball and boys' basketball and now they're going into soccer this spring. The two individuals that are going to speak tonight have done an amazing job in this space to keep this going. We've done this, I know they're going, I don't want to ruin their presentation, but they've done this throughout the, the last five years. They've been a huge part of this and I just want to thank them again. I know I've done it before, but I really want to thank them for keeping this rolling for the kids. You can go ahead, you too.
All right. Good evening, President May and Board of Education. Thank you for having us tonight and to Mr. Toko's credit, none of this would have ever been possible without his vision and bringing this to the district. So we began, as Mr. Toko mentioned, in two thousand and twenty-one with our first season of elementary athletics and it was simply out of a need of, we were a recreation desert. We became a recreation desert in this community with the Bailey Center closing in two thousand and twelve in Westland, the Wayne Community Center in two thousand and fifteen closing, which has since been beautifully renovated and opened by Hype. And, but we, we became a desert and so our community, our families didn't have low-cost, affordable recreation opportunities. So we brainstormed and, and thought about what were some of the wants and needs based on our, our programs that were at the middle school and high school and that's kind of how it all grew from there. So we are also the home of the Meteors and Commence, as many of you know, and competitive local football league. So there is tremendous desire for young people to be playing recreation programs here in the community. So we knew there was a need. Get your clicker working Jenny, this is kind of your thing.
Oh, it's going backwards now.
So, again, it kind of grew out of the, we were losing our athletes, so we knew that our, many of our basketball players and our football players were rostered on Livonia Churchill and Belleville and River Rouge and, and some still are, but we're working very steadily to win them back and to keep them here. But we know that we're losing those athletes at those transition years of sixth grade and eighth grade. So we, again, want to help grow our programs and build our feeder programs, which is the next slide about, if, if we can build a base and give kids some exposure that when they get to middle school, they've had some exposure, had some experience in those different athletic programs and then as they get to high school, they really know where they're going and what they want to offer and, and whatnot. So it all grew out of this need as to kind of how we got started. So I'll let Jenny talk about how we kicked off and you're on, you're on that.
All right. I've got the clicker duties. As Maria mentioned, we did start in two thousand and twenty-one and we started with the flag football and cheerleading program. To Mr. Toko's credit, he really insisted that we have these programs, these fourth and fifth graders come to our high school fields. He wanted us to split the time between Wayne Memorial High School and John Glenn High School. Because just as it's important for the kids to have these opportunities to play sports, it was just as important to make sure that they know they're part of Wayne Westland for life and that they get to play on the future high school sites. And it is really cool, Maria and I have lots of feels about this program, but it is really cool on Saturday morning to see fifty, sixty kids on three different flag football fields, whether you're at Wayne Memorial or John Glenn High School. So that, that's great. That started with the success. Then right now, we moved right into, gosh, from that fall season, we moved right into our basketball season. Clicker. Not doing it for myself. To right now, we have fourth and fifth grade students that in the fall, flag football is co-ed, we have cheerleading and we have girls' basketball. Then in the winter, which we're in right now, we've got boys' basketball and cheerleading. Going to put a little plug out there, we have two boys' basketball games left this season. This Saturday, March first, and next Saturday, March eighth, both are at John Glenn High School. We have games at nine, ten, eleven and twelve, free attendance. Concessions available for, for purchase and we promise you'll have a good time. Get there early though, because the stands do fill up. And then the thing, if any of you have walked by the communications office, you'll see a huge soccer net in our offices right now. We're doing a pilot program in the spring for our second and third graders. One of the really cool things over the past couple of years is this has really become a tradition in our elementary school and we now have our little kids knowing when they get to fourth and fifth grade that they get to do this, they get to participate. So we wanted to try to have something to offer to our younger kids. So we're going to do a four-week soccer program, our pilot program, starting in April, end of April, I think, yeah. We're going to start at the end of April, it's going to be on a Saturday, they're going to do a one-hour practice and possibly a one-hour game if their attention span is that far. And, yeah, we're going to, we still need coaches. Anybody wants to coach our second and third graders, we are looking for coaches. We're looking forward to it. Again, these little ones are going to be on the high school soccer fields and football fields, so we expect it to be a great time. And then the benefits. We talk about giving the kids the sports opportunities. Maria talked about how we didn't have a lot of recreation in our area anymore. That's very true. From us doing this, and you pitch in when you can, from us doing this the past four years, we've seen these other benefits that, I don't know how you measure them except to see it every Saturday when you're there. First thing is, this is no cost to our families. We offer this program entirely for free. We give them a uniform, we give them a coach, we give them practice, we give them playing time. We give them certificates or awards at the end and we give them a great time. And when I tell you their families roll in deep to come watch these kids, thank you, you've been there. Tell me ladies, scorekeeper?
Yeah. Yeah, many.
Yeah, many. They'll, they'll bring ten to twelve family members to come watch these games. The grandparents and the aunts who come, especially who are not from this district, still to this day can't believe that we don't charge admission to get in and that they can just come and watch this program. And the thing that we hear a lot is, I've never heard of anything like this before. Do any other schools do it? No. Other schools around here do not do this. This is something that is really unique to Wayne Westland.
I will add too, and Scott has gotten a sappy text from me on a Saturday going, this is the most amazing thing ever. Because we do get in our fields when those stands are full and the kids are just excited to be there and the parents are excited and the dads are running up and down the court and cheering on and, it, like if you really want to feel good after a bad week, come Saturday mornings and it, it's absolutely worth it. Every Saturday that Jenny and I get up and have to be there at eight AM, we love it and we wouldn't change it.
It's been really cool this year because we've transitioned from having our high school kids. Our high schoolers like to sleep in on Saturday mornings, so it was a little challenging getting them to come and referee. So we went with our adult referees who typically do the high school basketball games and some of them didn't quite understand when they came that this was little kids, so we had to explain to them, these are fourth and fifth graders. They've never played before, they're not going to understand, the coaches are on the court with them. And you kind of get the look from the refs at the beginning of the game that, great, what did I get myself into? Every single ref who is calm has said to us, can I come back next Saturday? This is the coolest thing. Is my time up? Okay. So SEL benefits, yes, it fosters all kinds of goodwill benefits. We talked about family engagement, our stands are packed. We get about a thousand people coming in. So right now, we've got five hundred athletes between our basketball players and our cheerleaders. Five hundred athletes that come in, they easily bring a thousand spectators every week. So we're talking, you know, you don't get some of that engagement for some of our other activities happening.
Some of the other thing that we did, we recognized that concessions is, people want concessions when they're at games. But that is not something Jenny and I wanted to take on, we tried that one time. And so we've turned to our elementary PTAs and PTOs and so they sign up to man the concession stands and bring in all the concessions. And then that's how many of them are fundraising for fifth grade camp and all of the different activities that are going on, so. With that, so it really, the return on investment, we have to be competitive if, if we're going to retain students and we're going to attract more students. So this is a way we're doing that. So in the next couple of slides, we'll talk about where our numbers, how our numbers have grown. So with the first one being flag football. Next slide please. So flag football was our first sport that we started with in two thousand and twenty-one. And we, we contract with RCX Sports and they're the ones who own that NFL flag. The name and everything in our area, so we're the only school district in Michigan that's doing this. And with it, so we started with a hundred and eight students, we're now, we have a hundred and forty-one students that, that's just doing flag, that doesn't count the cheerleaders that are out there. And that's one to two teams per school, it's a six-week season and it is a good time, rain or shine, we're out there. And I know many of you have been to some of those games, so it, it really is, it's a, it's a lot of fun. But that's, that was the first season that we started with and then Jenny's going to talk about the other.
So cheerleading is something that, wow, sometimes our cheerleaders, if you've been to a game, they can outnumber the athletes on the field. They love, and they have grown the program. So what you're seeing with the past few years that we have, with our cheerleading specifically, you can see those numbers there. We've grown fall cheer and winter cheer, but our kids are starting to own this program. They're starting to be captains, they're starting to get a turn to lead cheers, to ask their coach, hey, can we try this cheer? They made me a little nervous the other week when they asked if they could do stunts and I said, whoa. I'm going to tell you, stunts at the fourth grade level is a cartwheel. So we said, okay, okay, that was fine. But they're, they're bringing their own to it and they're really owning the program and they are so proud to be able to wear their shirts and their jerseys to school and let the other kids know that they're part of that team. Basketball has continued to grow as well. We have again, one to two schools, or one to two teams, pardon me, per school. We do the girls' basketball November and December before Christmas break. And then, as we said, right now, we're in our boys' basketball season. It's a little bit longer of a season because we come back end of January. We just had mid-winter break, so that's why we're going all the way until March. We have seen numbers climb there too, so in two thousand and twenty-two, we started with a hundred and forty-six girls' basketball students, now we're up to a hundred and sixty-one. I will say, many of those girls also are cheerleading. So we're seeing a lot of returned students. Just like a lot of our boys who play basketball, they're playing flag football too. So they're getting every opportunity that they can. And then soccer, oh, this one's me too. As we mentioned, soccer is coming this fall. We're excited that our little kids are going to get a chance. We're going to see how they like it. We're going to see how we like it and we're hoping that that's something we can maybe move forward with to see if we can continue to have something for our littler kids. Again, just to start building that pipeline. So the kids are getting excited and they know what's coming and they have something to look forward to. And as of today, we just sent registration out today, we already have, one of our schools is already capped. We already have a full team from one of our schools. So the parents, it's, it's a thing, they know and they're excited.
I will add too, is the coaches of these teams, with the exception of flag football, because their model is volunteer parents and actually we've had some volunteer staff too. The, the coaches are, are, are teachers, are, they're our staff. And they, it is remarkable how, it's really cool to watch them and how they're interacting and watching and working with the kids. And so that's extremely rewarding. You'll see one of our coaches here from, I think she's at Edison and she's been with us, ooh, all, every year. Like many of our coaches are returning coaches and work with the kids and.
And one of our scorekeepers right here.
Yeah, we have one of our scorekeepers, yes, yes. So we, we do employ and, and give opportunities for our staff as well. So we're currently serving right now this year over twelve hundred students. That number will climb with the addition of the soccer program. We're going to cap the soccer to one team per grade, just to again, see how it goes or what, yeah. And so this is, one team per school. And again, there's no cost to our families for this, not, not admission, only if they want to buy some popcorn. Otherwise, it's completely free and that definitely is what makes it attractive for our families. But how do we fund this? So right now, we've been funding this with grants and this year we're funding it with our service learning grant. But Hype Athletics was able to secure some funding through the state aid budget with the help of Senator Camilleri. And so we have Robbie Darwish here from Hype Athletics. Ali Said, who's the president, had to leave early, he had another commitment, so he apologizes, but Hype was able to secure a big old check for us to continue our work, so a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. So that we can continue this, this program and allow us to expand. And our vision was always to do more than just the fourth and fifth grade, so we're starting with the second and third grade and, and we're wanting to continue to do more with that. And then last but not least, we are continuing to explore our sixth grade participation and see what that looks like and maybe explore doing some intermural offerings for our sixth graders because we know our seventh and eighth graders get a lot of opportunities, but we know that there's some gaps with that sixth grade. So we're in the process right now of exploring that and, and minimally we'll do seven V seven flag football next year with that group. So, and I would like to allow Robbie Darwish to say a few words and on behalf of Hype and.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, on behalf of Ali Said, I'm sorry that he had to leave. On behalf of Ali Said and Hype Athletics, I'd like to thank the Wayne Westland School Board. And this is incredible to basically invest in the future in sports and in the youth. We are investing in our youth and team building and resilience. And I'm really excited to see what this brings to our future. And Hype really believes in all of you and please continue to do your work. Continue to protect our children, to the administrative staff, to all the teachers, day in and day out, to Unson Heroes that puts all this together, your work, and I just want to thank you.
So with that, are there any questions that you might have?
Ms. May?
Yes.
Thank you for the presentation. And rather than a question, Robbie, if you would please extend to Mr. Said our appreciation. It is, it is the school board that is grateful for Hype Athletics and his work. And I know it isn't just this community that he gives back in, but every community he's in, he's done an exceptional job. I wish him great success and appreciate very much his partnership with our school district. Thank him on my behalf.
He's a great partner. Hype's a wonderful partner of ours.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for all you do. This is a wonderful program. And I had a question and I'm not sure this is the proper time, but I'm just going to ask it. Do we have a separate insurance rider for our kids or should we have?
That's a great question.
All of our athletes have covered on our policy, our school district policy.
Okay, so there's...
So we're talking about from any athlete from fourth grade to twelfth grade that we have participated. It's an umbrella policy.
Right, okay.
I know that the question probably should be more for Jewel, who's not here at this point, but I, just from being involved in athletics and athletic programs, so the umbrella policy will cover all of our athletes in that situation. They can buy individual insurance too, that is on top of that, but there's an umbrella for kids in our district.
Okay, I was just wondering whether the insurance is only for school hours or...
Most of our athletic events at the high school are after hours anyway, so I believe that that policy would cover days and hours outside of that. I don't want to be for sure on that one, but I believe that would be the case because most of our athletic activities occur after school hours.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tyne?
Yes, I'd like to thank you guys for all that you do. This is amazing when it comes to our young kids, when it comes to fighting depression, obesity. So thank you, Hype, so much, even with Westland, when we lost our recreation center. So this is really nice to have the kids come out. And I also like to thank Hype as well because they help with our literacy with the koalas. They actually partnered with us twice. So with the school district and with the literacy program, so thank you so much for all you do for our children.
Thank you. Mrs. Agnew Mitchell and then Mr. Rashan.
I would also like to say thank you to Hype for all that you do. And to the ladies, I would like to say thank you. I've been there on a couple of Saturdays and one of the things that impressed me is when I was there is to have a high schooler being the referee. That was really very impressive. And thank you for what you do, ladies, and thank you, Hype, and keep on doing it. You're going to have to let that check go though. He's still got the check. All right, thank you.
Mr. Rashan?
I want to echo the rest of the board. Thank you. I had the opportunity to go to a few games and truly, it was great. I saw parents, grandparents, great-grandparents come out. Stands were full. I came to one game and stayed for another game. It was just fun to see. Quick question, as far as the coaches, are we looking into asking some of the student athletes to be coaches? Just to keep that pipeline going, that district?
We have had in the past, and that is something, so the employees are right now the coaches. Some of them have taken on quote-unquote student interns, maybe students that they're working with or something, and had them come help. Students can't be in charge of students though, so they would have to work through that adult coach. But yeah, that's a great point.
Great, great.
We've worked with them as being referees.
Yeah.
Great, great. Because again, great program. I haven't seen anything like this in any other districts, so great job.
We're unique. Thank you so much. And please make it out to next two Saturdays.
Now we'd like to take just a second to get a picture with Robbie and Mr. Toco and Ms. May down in front with the check, if that's okay?
It's a good thing they sent their, good thing they sent their most handsome guy.
I just want to see him get a check to somebody because he's still got it. Come on, Jay, yeah, Jay, go down there. Go here.
I really, he truly did all the work. He deserved that.
Listen, Jenny said point and shoot.
Are you depositing that check right now? Is that what you're doing? Take a couple more.
Nice.
Thank you, Robbie. Extend our appreciation.
Is this your phone?
Yeah, I think it is, yeah.
Have to watch the hamburgers.
Thank you for that, Mr. Toco.
Thank you so much.
Do you have another presentation?
Yes, I do. Tonight, we're going to do, two meetings ago in December, we did basically our celebration from our bond that started in 2018. Tonight is going to be a kickoff or a tease for our bond that's coming in November. So we're asking the community to come out and vote for our bond. One thing that I really want to express in this, before we start the presentation, is that this is a zero increase bond to the community. So there'll be zero cost to the community when we come. And there'll be a marketing campaign that's going to start as of today, as we move forward, but we'll be pushing out more of our marketing materials for the bond as we move forward. Tonight, we have Bill and Gail from TMP and we have Doug Underwood from McCarthy Smith that will be talking about the bond, talking about some of the things that we'll be doing to our buildings in regards to things that we did not get done in the previous bond. And the focus of our bond, moving into it, is going to be warm, safe and dry buildings. Our focus is also based on needs, based on the number that we'll be working with. This bond that will be coming in November will be based on the needs of the district to our buildings. The gentleman and Gail, who is speaking tonight, have been working on this for over a year in regards to figuring out where we were at with the previous bond and what we need to work, what needs to be done within the district to our buildings in the next bond. So most of the projects that we were unable to complete that would focus on warm, safe and dry will be addressed in this next bond. Before I talk too much, I'm going to let them get started on their presentation for tonight.
Well, good evening. Good to be back after a couple of months. So tonight, as Scott kind of talked about, just wanted to give you guys a quick update of what we've been doing really over the last year, year and a half. Must be on autoplay or whatever. But anyway, there were a group of us, Wayne Westland, the facilities group, technology group, TMP Architecture and ourselves that kind of set out to begin assessing facilities, the condition of the facilities, not so much the condition of the facilities themselves, but things that were nearing the end of their useful life within the buildings or on the envelope of the buildings. So I don't know why that keeps doing that. But anyway, a lot of what we were looking at, again, really came down to what's the useful life of some of the components that are still in the buildings that have not been touched or renovated within the last, you know, couple of bonds. So this may just be a talk through. So one of the, the second bullet there, there were some buildings, i.e. this particular building, Walker Winter Elementary School, the Wayne Westland Innovative Academy, buildings and grounds in the transportation building that were not touched as part of the 2018 bond that especially at Wayne Walker, or I'm sorry, Walker Winter Elementary School, we will be going through to give that building kind of the same touch and love that all the other elementary schools within the, within the district got in this last bond. Again, you're just kind of seeing this stuff go through, but we looked at HVAC equipment that was on the end of its useful life, roofs, parking lots, classroom furniture, technology equipment and some of the upgrade of devices that have been purchased even earlier than the 2018, but also in the, in the 2018 bond that maybe hadn't been touched. So again, as Mr. Toco said, it was really kind of assessing these, the facilities from a warm, safe and secure atmosphere type thing when we went to look at these. So our findings, you know, and where we're at right now, and we're really still in the discovery phase of putting this together. We've put some associated kind of costs together just to get an idea of where we're, where we're sitting. We're around a hundred and seventeen million. Again, what does that mean? That doesn't mean a whole lot right now because again, we're just now beginning to kind of explore this. And as we get into talking with committees and certainly staff and those types of things, that number's going to, that number's going to move around. And then this pie chart just kind of shows currently how that hundred and seventeen million is kind of being distributed. And I'm assuming you guys have this in your packet so you can, you can see the percentages for each of the items there.
Thank you. Well, thank you, President May, for inviting us to the meeting tonight to talk about this. And I'm going to take just a little bit of a step back here because I want to just show you what the kind of process for determining a bond program looks like. And I know you won't read this, but the blue part is discovery. And as Doug mentioned, we are completing and really are completed with our walkthroughs and identifying all the bricks and mortar kinds of upgrades. But now we're heading into kind of that soft part where we really need to engage with staff to talk to them about kind of what's happening in the classroom. So we're heading into the final stage of discovery. We are going to be conducting what are called aligned learning workshops with staff. There are, I think, four different workshops planned, starting in a couple of weeks, heading through April, where we will actually invite all staff to participate in these sessions where we're going to talk about trends in classroom furniture and technology. What's going on in that classroom and how can these items support, better support teachers to make students more successful? So we're going to get feedback at these workshops about what works in their classroom, what would they like to see different, how can we provide more flexibility, more, kind of just, just more ability for them to be successful with their students. So those will be taking place in March and April. This is just a flyer that we're sharing with staff to invite them to these sessions. And we absolutely are going to encourage all of their voice to be heard at these sessions. It's very interactive and the purpose is to gather this information, get this feedback so that district leadership can really digest this and understand where they want to head with the classroom furniture component of what they have identified as kind of end of useful life items there. Once that is done, May and June are really the months that the professional team will work with district leadership to hone in on that absolute bond scope. You know, what is it that really comprises the scope of this bond moving forward? Because at the board's approval, we would then move into preparing the Department of Treasury's bond application. And we have a date locked in with the state for June 11th. So if the board approves the bond scope to move forward, then we would be ready and prepared to meet with the state for their approval on that bond application. Obviously, from there, I mean, there's a lot of legal and election things that happen, but then we would move into the campaign phase and we would be working with the district to prepare a very robust communication package, working with Jenny so that really, everyone in the community is educated. These pieces that are shared on the screen were from the past bond program where we really took care to, to make sure that all community members would have different tools, whether they were hard copy or digital, to really digest this, understand it and have a place to learn about the benefits and features of the program. Thank you, and are there any questions?
There, then Dr. Weaver?
Question is to Doug. I want to make sure that because of crowds that we have had at our meetings, I want to make sure that a new boardroom is part of this.
Believe it or not, there has been discussion, yes.
Well, I want more than discussion.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I can say one thing. I do want to reiterate that it will be a zero percent increase to the community because that will be our focus. And I know as time moves on, you're going to hear that, for me at least, and from the people that were up there tonight, to make sure that's very clear to the community and then the warm, safe and dry aspect of what we're looking at. Thanks.
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we are at 287.25, citizens comments regarding agenda items. Do we have any forms? Thank you. Yes, agenda items. Is this the only one? Okay.
Gwen Frontenbleway Memorial High School. It was more about just the bond. I know that they said that they came around and looked, but I'm wondering if they're going to actually talk to teachers about the rooms that do leak or the windows that you see gaps between the actual brick and the windows. Like if we pushed really hard, some of the windows would fall out of the buildings. Because I can see the outside. I'm not going to, but I'm just saying like... So I can't say that I've actually seen anybody in my room looking and I moved rooms this year. So I know my old room leaked when it rained really hard. So, and I know that we're talking about like student desk and things like that, but what about teacher's desk as well? Like, we're sitting in the same seats the teachers that sat in when I went to Wayne High thirty years ago. So I understand that the students, but... So I understand that the students, but teachers also need desk drawers at work. Like if your desk breaks, you're lucky to find another one somewhere in the district or in the basement that might not be as broken as the one you're using right now. So I'm just wondering if that's also part of that bond. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? All right, seeing none others or no others, we will move to 288.25, Consent Agenda. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Do we have support?
Support.
Thank you, Mrs. Abney Mitchell, discussion. Mrs. Hines, will you please call roll?
Yes. Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. We are now at Agenda Item 289.25, Board of Education Committee Reports. Mr. Ambrose?
The Finance Committee Meeting for February 13th, 2025, was called to order at 5:31 with the following in attendance: myself, Vice President Lawana Mitchell, our Secretary, Ms. Melanie Hines, Interim Superintendent Jennifer Curry, our Chief Financial Officer, Jewel Claire, Mr. Gino Montane, the Director of Maintenance and Operations, and Ms. Kim Markey, our, our Board Administrative Assistant. After some brief remarks, we heard from Mr. Montane. He had two proposals that he wanted to present to the, to this board meeting. The first one is the purchasing of lift and stairs for the high schools in order to be, high school pools in order to be ADA compliant. He stated that there was a public bid opening on February 4th, 2025, and he recommends that we purchase the equipment from Baruzi Aquatics for approximately $52,500, with funding coming from either the, the bond and/or sinking fund. The board members asked questions to Mr. Montane regarding the construction and the materials used for the lift and lift and stairs and the weight capacity. He stated that the construction materials would be PVC and would consist of stairs and a handrail with a weight capacity of 400 pounds and that it should last 20-plus The second thing he brought before us was the liquidating of school district surplus equipment. Mr. Montane said that periodically the district will take obsolete or in need of ma, equipment or, equipment in need of major repairs to auction. He discussed that they would like to send the following to au, to auction. The district's old salt truck that was recently replaced and some old musical instruments from our district's instrumental music program. The instrumental music program within the past few months have received some, some new instruments and these ones are, that we would be sending to auction. Some are playable, some, some will need some, some repairing could be used for parts for another, for another district. Following Mr. Montane, we heard from Ms. Claire about the state aid report. The only state aid that we received this month was due to reimbursement for board There is also some other funds from the state coming for reimbursement to some of our staff who've paid into a fund for healthcare after retirement. That'll be, the payments were made in March and October from, from our district members and the district will be refunding that money to them. The investment report, Ms. Claire stated that the fund at the time was just over 57 million. That's down about a million from, from last month. That was expected. And the interest rate was also dropped. It was 4.61% last month and it's now at 4.46. And she went over the check register. The district spent just under $6 million for the month of January and some questions were asked about the expenditures. Following Ms. Claire, we moved to the comments section portion where Ms. Curry thanked everyone for being flexible for the Finance Committee Meeting. We moved the time from a special board meeting to an online session just for the committee because of the weather that we had come in. Ms. Abney Mitchell appreciated everyone's flexibility and working together. Ms. Hines thanked Ms. Curry for attending the recent Chamber of Commerce meeting and is looking forward to the partnership between the Chamber of Commerce and the school district. I thank Ms. Curry for her community events that she's held. I also stated that I'm not a fan of using online meetings for the Finance Committee and using the online meeting should be an exception and not the rule. And my goals as treasurer and being in charge of the Finance Committee is to provide some level of transparency to the public and as a committee, we are going, going to work on ways to, to be more transparent because that is what we heard from the voters. The meeting was unadjourned at 6:00, 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you so much. Moving on to Agenda Item 290.25, Review and Approval of Business Service and Finance. Mr. Toko?
Yes, thank you. Based on the results of the public bid opening held on February 4th, 2025, I'm requesting a board approval, board's approval to purchase two handicap lifts and stairs for the high school pools to ensure ADA compliance. If approved, the purchase will be issued to Barzuni Aquatics and will not exceed $52,495.33 and will be charged to the bond or the sinking funds.
Move approval.
So moved. You ready to call roll? Because it was motion, Dr., I mean, it's not Mr. Hines, and then Ms. Hines supported it?
I move approval, and you got support, I think.
I know, I'm waiting on Ms. Hines to call roll.
I'm sorry?
I was waiting on Ms. Hines to call roll. Well, I'm sorry, I was moving fast.
I got a question. Can you repeat what you said about the lift again? It's gonna be where?
It's gonna be at Wayne Memorial and there's gonna be one at both Wayne Memorial Pool and the John Glenn Pool.
Okay. No, I thought you said that it would be up under something.
Oh, no, no. It comes up, it's kind of on the top of the surface and then it allows the individual to go into the water.
Yeah, I just didn't think I heard Wayne Memorial, that's all.
Yeah, both of them.
Any other discussion points? Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Toko, moving on to the recommendation.
Yes. I am requesting board approval to liquidate items from the district surplus as discussed at the February Finance Committee Meeting. All proceeds from, proceeds from this auction will be returned to the general fund.
Motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? Not hearing any, Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
And President May?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Our next item is 291.25, Review and Approval of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Items. Mrs. Curry?
Thank you. I recommend the board approve the 15-day Virtual Learning Instruction Day Plan under MCL 388.162, which allows school districts to utilize virtual instruction for up to 15 days within a school year under specific circumstances.
Move approval.
Support.
So we have approval and support, discussion. Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Item 292.25, Michigan Association of School Boards, Board of Directors. Everyone received a packet from both Mrs. Merkey and Cheryl Huffman from MASB, looking for a nomination for the Board of Directors for MASB, from the packet that we received. Would you all like to have a discussion in regards to that?
Will we nominate somebody?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I would like to nominate Dr. Anisha, Anisha Hannan, Pontiac Schools, if there are no other recommending, no other nominations.
What does she do in Pontiac Schools right now?
She is there, she's on the school board, she is the school board president.
Oh, okay.
I'll second that nomination.
I support it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Our next item is 293, 293.25, Board Committees. So there are two recommendations here. The first one is to dissolve the ad hoc property committee. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
I am against this motion. As you know, there are times when the property committee, it's a lot of hurry up and wait, but there are times when the property committee needs to get in there and interact with, interact with the administration to move forward decisions that are on the timeline. For that reason, I am against dissolving this committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, I would like to speak as well. I'm against dissolving the ad hoc committee because it was pretty helpful when we decided to sell Marshall. And again, as Dr. Weaver said, certain things we need to do in a timely matter with the property committee, so, and especially with the bond stuff coming up, and I think it'd be a good idea to keep the committee as well.
Any other discussion?
So I would like to just add that the reason why I brought forth the motion is because our Finance Committee is actually called Finance and Facilities. And so keeping that in mind, understanding that those properties can go through the Finance Committee, there's been a lot of discussion about the number of committees that we have and people not being available to meet for those committees. And so that was why I lifted this. I just wanted to add that piece as to why it was lifted.
Because I made the motion, I thought it was a good idea. You want a property disposition committee, you can establish one in a second. It doesn't take any time at all. And if you have a committee, a standing committee, even if they don't have business, they have to meet. I mean, so I, I don't care one way or the other though. So I just don't, clean out the junk drawer if you can. There's no property right now that we're talking about. So, anyway.
And if we talk about any, it's gonna be brought forward to the board anyway, whether there's a committee or not, right?
For a vote, yes.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, no. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
And President May?
Yes.
Okay, one, two, three, four yeses and two no's.
Thank you. The next recommendation is to dissolve the Ad Hoc Superintendent's Evaluation Committee. Pretty much the same, well, I believe it, that is your motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Thank you. So I'll just add that this was another committee that was an ad hoc committee. Under the circumstances, every board member should be a part of the superintendent evaluation process, and so that's why the recommendation is being brought forth to dissolve this ad hoc committee. If there is no further discussion, I will ask for Ms. Hines to call a vote, please.
Yes, Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. President May?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have discussion around our standing board committees. So just wanted to, again, for the sake of transparency, make sure that everyone was aware, our community, that we have two standing, well, actually, three standing board committees. Finance and Facilities, Policies and Procedures, that also includes strategic planning, and then our Student Achievement Committee, which was just recently created. And as of now, Shannon is, sorry, Mr. Rashawn, Shannon Rashawn is chairing that committee. And so with that, I'm gonna leave the floor open for any type of discussion that needs to take place. And that committee will have another two members on it. And I have, I did ask Mr. Rashawn if I could be on that committee. And the reason why I ask is because I've always asked for this committee since I got on the board, and so I would like to be a part of that. And so then there is opening for one more, correct? You have not selected your person, okay. There are no other, no other discussions?
Mr. Rashawn is also on policy, just so you know.
So.
If we don't have another member that would like to be on the Student Achievement Committee, I would like to join.
Okay. Is this the Rashawn's committee? That's why I'm not saying anything? He's the chair.
Yes, yes, please, please come.
Thank you.
So with that, we will now move to Item 294.25, Review and Approval of Human Resource Items. Dr. Philly?
Thank you, President May. I'd like to make a recommendation to the board that Christine Doyle become the next Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School. Ms. Doyle comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science from Central Michigan University, a Master's of Arts from Central Michigan University. She holds a Professional Admin Certification and Professional Education Certificate. She's previously held positions as a high school math teacher at Detroit Midtown Academy, a middle school, high school math teacher position at Crescent Academy in Southfield, a high school math teacher position at Advanced Technical Academy in Dearborn, Michigan, a high school math teacher position at Lincoln Park High School, a high school math, science teacher position at Crestwood High School, and most recently, she was an Assistant Principal at International Technology Academy in Pontiac, Michigan. And I'd like to make a recommendation that she become our next Assistant Principal at John Glenn.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Dr. Philly, thank you for having Mrs. Doyle here this afternoon, the early part of the evening for each of us to meet her. With that being said, Ms. Hines, will you please call roll?
Mr. Rashawn?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes. Ms. Abney Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
President May?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We are now at Item 295.25, Citizens Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Do we have any? You can hand it to Dr. Weaver, he'll pass it down, please. Thank you. You can hand it to Dr. Weaver. He'll pass it down, please. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Jennifer Day?
Hi, my name is Jennifer. Um, I'm a previous Wayne High student, class of two thousand and three. Um, I'm here to represent, um, Melinda's daughter, Eleanor Trushawn, whom cannot be here tonight. She's smart as a whip. She's six years old and she already knows how to spell her name. Uh... Her mom is Melinda Harris, but she's actually a Trushawn through marriage. And she said, "I am here because, so I could support my mom." Um, my mom likes to support the teachers and my mom also loves kids. Um, my mom's a hard worker. This is a six-year-old, not you. Uh, thank you for helping my mom. And I just want to add, she advocated for me for about twenty years and I just, you know, wanna thank her for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melinda Harris?
Do we have a thing that shows where the minutes start? Like City Hall, I can't remember. Or do I just kinda, you just tell me when I'm done?
I am gonna tell you in one second. There's not a timer up here, so I'm gonna set this timer really quick on the iPad here. And you may start.
Thank you. My name is Melinda Harris. I'm a long-term volunteer in the Wayne Westland School District. My husband has also volunteered over the years. We also participated in the parent policy meetings at Stottlemyre Head Start when they had limited parents, um, needed to meet guidelines for funding. Three generations of my family have resided in the Westland community and we take immense pride in that. My only sibling and brother, Tom, has been afflicted with Lou Gehrig's, a crippling, life-threatening disease. He has also contributed to the community and gave eighteen years of his life as a Westland Police Officer and Sergeant. Today, I am here because I have had problems communicating with the school and the district. Last year was tough. In the beginning of the year, there were misunderstandings between myself and my children's school. Meetings were conducted and the end result was, all was supposed to be well. When the meeting subsided, great things started happening with myself and the Assistant Principal. He and I were working together on more in-classroom parent volunteering for myself and other parents. He even brainstormed an idea of a Parent Volunteer Friday. He also impressed me when he took my suggestion to replace the kid's snack cart with, it had like junky foods with healthy food cart, and he allowed me to bring in my healthy samples to show him. Unfortunately, at the end of the year, he was transferred. And with the transfer went all our brainstorming and ideas for the future. Then I was back to step one, feeling alone and doing this by myself. At the beginning of the school year, I was out of state for a month tending to my brother. As soon as I came back, I was eager to volunteer and I put in my iChat for the day after I returned. I patiently waited for my iChat to be emailed and returned by the district and it was never turned in. Sadly, after this, I was told upon other things that there would be no volunteer opportunities for me this year at my son-daughter's school and that they would think about it for next year. Going forward, I tried the channels on the district website and it stopped at the Director of Elementary level. I was not given any of the meetings I requested from the district. I also feel from previous conversations from admin that when we are advocating for our children, that some of our concerns as parents should be validated and not used against us as negative or apparent as a nuisance. Here's a note for the teachers. Upon research, using parent volunteers in your classroom has many benefits that often outweigh the intimidation factor during, having a parent volunteer in the room. Typically, admin should love when you have parents working as partners and can make a positive difference in your classroom. Conclusively, there is nothing I would love more than to communicate, to be heard, to discuss all sides, have peace, have kindness, love come back to me and my family during the family hardship of my brother being seriously ill. I also care for everyone at the school. I love all children. I've always gone over and beyond to advocate kindness to children in the district. I do want to let you know with these bonds that I went out walking myself a few years ago, promoting parents to pay the six dollars on their taxes to promote remodeling in the schools. I was out there actively doing that. I got this award for volunteer, also got a certificate from Ms. Page and the teacher last June.
Ms. Harris, that is your time. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to give praise to Mr. Furka though. He was the one that was helping me.
Thank you. Kim Kay?
Hi, my name is Kim Koppelshatz. I really can't say it better than she already said it. I've been a volunteer, um, in different areas of Westland for the last ten years. I was born and raised here, moved away for a while, came back. But, um, Melinda has always been one of my best friends. I know her better than anybody and I know how much she cares, how much she wants, quit it. She loves people. She loves children. She loves to make a difference. She even, um... She has disabled children, disabled adults, help out at the church. And she helps them learn. She helps them in any way she can. And I've seen her do a lot with the city, with anybody that she can help. She does, um, even with animals. But, um, I know she wants to volunteer more at the school, any way she can. But if you guys give her a chance, or, I know it's not the board itself, but, uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. We are now at item two nine six point two five, Interim Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Curry?
Thank you. Uh, we are very proud to announce that our district is one of nineteen in Michigan to be awarded the Future Proud Michigan Educator Explorer Grant. The Michigan Department of Education allocated six hundred and twenty-five thousand in total, and our district will receive twenty thousand dollars. These funds will support teacher educator classes at Franklin and Stevenson Middle Schools, providing our students with valuable hands-on experience working with younger children and inspiring them to explore teaching careers in their own community. Um, second, and secondly, in celebration of Black History Month, students across the district are participating in activities such as Spirit Week, guest readers, and learning about historical black figures. Schools are sharing community resources to help families engage with local events and education materials. Classrooms are also incorporating discussion projects, discussions, projects, and creative displays to highlight black leaders, achievements, and cultural contributions. We are making strong progress in recovering from our recent cyber attack. Uh, most systems, including the internet, cameras, copiers, printers, phones, faxing, and badge access are now fully operational. Our investigation has not confirmed any compromise of student or staff data. We have set up a cyber technology restoration hub to keep our building administrators updated and will be working with an external cybersecurity firm to audit and strengthen our security systems. And lastly, since the fall, the Transportation Department has made staffing improvements. We now have fifty-two drivers covering fifty routes, two substitute drivers, and two drivers in training. One is set to complete training by the first week of March and the other next week. Additionally, there are twenty-three attendants assigned to twenty-two routes. And we are also gonna be establishing a committee to work on other problem-solving situations to make sure that we can get our kids to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just jumping 'cause, uh, obviously I'm tired. I apologize. We are now at two nine seven point two five, Review and Recommendations, Board of Ed. Mr. Cox?
Thank you.
I'm moving.
I have nothing tonight.
Dr. Weaver?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam President. Out of some of our discussion earlier in the closed session, I would just like to say to the other members of the board that I believe it important that this board elect Mrs. Curry, our Superintendent, as our next Superintendent, so that we can give her a fair evaluation of the job that is actually hers. Uh, interim suggests short term. And I would like to say to this board, if we want a boardroom full of people, um, with pitchforks and everything else, uh, though, I think the worst thing that we could do is to think about a social or a superintendent search. And I believe in the next month or two that we should award her the job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz.
Yes, I'd like to thank the students that did the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to congratulate our new principal. Um, also, I'd like to congratulate all of our wonderful teams in Wayne Westland, our sports teams. Um, the, I think they have like the basketball team, the bowling, this, I'm just really super excited about our teams that we've been doing. I'd like to, um, also thank Jim for doing those community conversations. Um, I've been in, on the board almost like twelve years. That's the first time we actually had like an event like out in Canton. So it's really nice for like really going out to different communities and being more active. So I definitely, um, appreciate that. And I want to also say that I am proud of what you've been doing, um, as you stepped into this role. I mean, you put out a lot of fires with the seventeen million dollars. Then we had the cyber attack. Then we had the teacher contracts. I mean, it's been, so I'm really, really impressed. And thank you for just, you know, holding this, this, this school district together. We definitely appreciate that. Um, I also like to say, um, I was really excited that you guys came to the Wayne City Manager Luncheon. And what I like to do is build communities, like build partnerships and relationships. So it was really good, uh, having Wayne West in there. We had like Local Nine Hundred. We had some people that wanted to partner with like Smart, Dorsey College, just different organizations that really want to partner with the school district. And even they can help us with additional funds, you know, or different programs. So, you know, even when it comes to career paths, that's one thing I like about working with the chamber is that we can, um, you know, put these different businesses with these students and give them other opportunities. So that's a really good thing there. Um, I was able to go to the M D P convention Saturday over, um, in Detroit. And, um, and we was working with like our labor unions, you know, with our staff, our M E A, um, 'cause a lot of things going on nationally. So just, you know, getting that support. Um, I was also able to get elected to be on the Executive Board of the Congressional District and on the State Central Committee. So the nice thing about having those relationships is having those relationships with our politicians. And like when we have our legislative lunches and our breakfast, you know, that's how we get our funds, that's how we get bills made. We work with our lobbyists to kind of get some of our needs to land. So it was nice being able to go to that over the weekend. Um, and tomorrow, um, we have the Wayne Westland Colinas Club. We're actually meeting at the Westland Library at twelve o'clock. So we meet on the second Tuesdays of the month and then the last Tuesdays of the month. And that helps with the literacy, 'cause we have an issue with, you know, children reading. So this is a really good program. And we have a lot of volunteers. We have a group over at John Glenn High School, the Key Club. So a group has sponsored for the kids. We have like, I think, thirty-something members over at the high school. So we're working on different literacy programs. And then I was able to partner with the Michigan Small Business Development Center. And I want to get this out to the community. We're doing free classes, this is for start, to start small businesses. Um, so the first one is gonna be Thursday, March the twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M at the Wayne Library. And this is gonna be the one to start a business. And I'll get the flyers out and it's for all the families in the district. Anybody who wants to start a family is free of charge. These programs that they have with the Small Business Development Center. And then the next one's gonna be Thursday, April the tenth, from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M. And it's how to form an L L C at the Wayne Public Library from five-thirty to seven-thirty P M. So this is something good. Even our students, anybody can come. It's like no age limit and it could be something like an entrepreneurship-type thing for free at the library. So we'll definitely get those out. And I think that's it.
If you want to start a family, what do you do?
I think she meant to say-
Mr. Rashawn?
I was gonna say, because we get paid by the students, so, to say, if that's something you want to do, go for it.
I just wanna thank the staff and the, um, administrators and the volunteers, all the hard work you guys been doing. Um, and also hype Jim again. I think it's gonna take us to foster community partnerships to really grow the district to where we want to go. Um, I also look forward to chairing the Student Achievement Committee. Um, there are a few things I really want to key in on with the Student Achievement Committee. Um, one is our curriculum development enhancement. Uh, another is data-driven decision-making. And, uh, third thing is our professional development for edu- for our educators. So I look forward to doing that and growing our district and improving our district.
Thank you. Mr. Ambrose?
I want to echo Mr. Rashawn's, uh, comments about those who are volunteering in our district. Thank you. A few weeks ago, a few of us had the opportunity to attend the Champions of Wayne banquet. These are our students who are working with, with mentors. Some of them are teachers and some of them are members of the community who give up their time to help these students set goals and to help them work towards accomplishing those goals. The parents who volunteer on the sports program we, we heard about tonight. The small acts of, that make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Abney Mitchell?
Yes, I would first like to thank the students from, um, Roseville, um, McGruff for sending the pledge and they, um, Principal for his presentation. Um, and I would also like to say thank you to, we had the opportunity to scout, um, Inspire Inkster over the weekend. Um, Troop Four ninety-nine hosted a event for Inspire Inkster troops, which is troop, um, two oh four, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four. And, um, Sarah, um, um, Huck Hay is in charge of the, um, um, club scouts at David Hicks. So the troop, um, Four ninety-nine, they hosted a, an event for our troops over the weekend where they taught them about cooking, building a campfire, pitching a tent, um, roasting marshmallows. It was a very nice event. And, um, our students was happy and they appreciate being able to go. They went on the bus, free of transportation. Um, Sarah is really working hard with this troop, um, um, twenty twenty-four and Inkster Inspired. Um, they have free swimming lessons during the week. Um, it's a whole lot of opportunities that she was able to get, um, for our students. And, um, it's very appreciative. I think, um, she started off with maybe about a handful of, um, club scouts. They was here in January. And I think they up to almost, um, eighty-three now. So it's a blessing for the students in Inkster to be able to go out and learn how to swim for free. And, you know, and, um, just like, um, Andrew and, um, let's see if you can see it. Shannon said, "We had to have volunteers, 'cause the volunteers is our meat here." You know, it get things done. I volunteer in a whole lot of programs with my grandkids through the school district. But volunteering is very important. And I just want to thank that troop, um, it, they were senior citizens and, you know, we like senior citizens volunteer. But to host us on a Saturday, they didn't have to do that. So I'm very appreciative. And they supplied their free bus ride. So that was very nice for us. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. I would like to, um, thank our students, Gurah and Madeline for leading us in the pledge this evening. I also like to thank everyone for all of the presentations and the volunteers supporting our district programming. We have many great things that are happening in our district. I had the pleasure of attending the Glenn Hall of Fame induction ceremony. I do appreciate that invite. And it was my little sidebar. I had the opportunity to see Mr. Buckaloo. And everybody knows how I love Mr. Buckaloo, so that just made my day. Um, I also attended the Wayne High Student Achievement Banquet, where over two hundred scholars received checks for meeting their academic and/or socio-emotional learning goals. So again, as I said, we have some phenomenal things happening in our district. I also like to thank Ms. Mrs. Curry and her team for the lovely evening at the, um- I also like to thank Ms. Mrs. Curry and her team for the lovely evening at the, um, Community Engagement Dinner that took place in Canton, in Canton. It was a, um, great casual way for families to learn more about the district, to ask questions and to make suggestions to keep the district moving forward. And on a side note, dinner was delicious. So I strongly encourage our families to come out to the next one, which is taking place on Thursday. Um, I also just wanted to share another little side note. This weekend, I had the pleasure of attending the U of M, um, gymnastics meet against UCLA. And I quickly learned that we had a Glenn graduate that is a phenomenal gymnast on the, um, U of M team. So she's just outstanding to see her perform and did not know when they announced she was from Westland. I was like in the program looking and I'm like, she's a Glenn graduate, yay! So just wanted to share that. Um, her name is Paige Thaxton. It's very exciting. And finally, this evening, the board completed the mid-year progress check-in with Mrs. Curry. And I'm happy to share that we are pleased with the progress the district is making on the two established goals for the year. The first goal is to enhance transparent communication and strengthen relationships between families, schools, and communities. The second goal is by twenty twenty-five, all teachers will provide evidence of competency and implementation of MDE's literacy, literacy essentials, that's for pre-K through five, and disciplinary literacy in grades six through twelve as measured by six-to-elf surveys, classroom observations, and data conversations. And K-five will be measured by foundational skill and NWEA data. We concluded the meeting by adding a third mid-year goal around improving our supports and getting our students to school. So we know that we have some issues with transportation. We would like to take a look at how we can improve that. So we've added that as a goal as a board, um, to Mrs. Curry. And she was very excited to take that on and to work collaboratively to, um, work on that. And so with that, I would like to entertain a motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Support. Yes, no, we're not. I did, but, two-nine, sorry. I'm moving fast. I, I apologize. You guys, let me slow it down. We do have another item, two nine eight point two five, which is the follow-up to Board of Ed questions. So do we have any that we need to share out?
Uh, we can share out one about the bond. And Mr. Toco, feel free to chime in. I know, Gwen, when you mentioned, um, teacher furniture. Well, I think we look at that like technology, right? When we all got technology, teachers got technology too. So when we say classroom furniture, we mean all furniture in the classroom. Is that correct?
If I, if I can, Scott, in the handout that we received tonight, there's a little card here and it says, "You are invited, classrooms of the future. This is the staff engagement session." I was gonna hand this to you before we left.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Right.
We're in the... So, so you're, you're gonna have the opportunity. They've already, they've already...
Yeah, we're in the discovery stage of this in regards to, uh, projects. And why I said warm, safe, and dry is because that is, will be our focus in regards to where we're moving forward. And I wanted to be very clear with that. But, um, just to your questions, we're gonna be reaching out, um, like Mr. Cox said, to staff. So we're kind of in the discover, like, uh, that's where we're at. We're in the discovery, uh, part of this process.
Um, and then one other, yeah, I know that at the last month's meeting, someone was asking about AP classes. So we are, um, looking at our offerings for advanced placements and dual enrollment and working with individuals to make sure that we can give them classes that they need, which doesn't not necessarily mean we can offer every single AP class, but we can at least list them, see what's available, and then depending on the enrollment in those, determine which ones we run.
Thank you. Now I'm at two nine nine point two five. I jarred it. All in favor? You have the support?
Support, support, support.